All right, we're going to call the Wednesday, March twenty-sixth. Special Town Council, I guess it's a municipal, isn't it? Or is it a town council? Is it a town council?
Town Council.
Town Council, all right. Special meeting to order. It is six oh four P M. I don't know, we're on. We'll start that over again.
Tom was on.
All right, we're going to start again. Calling the Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, Town Council, special meeting to order. It is six oh four P M. We have seven councillors present. Councillor Parker is online and Councillor Jones and Borlan are not here. Up next, we're going to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up next is the introduction of elected officials. Councillor Parker, you're online. Would you like to say hello? Councillor Parker, can you, would you like to say hello? And you're muted.
Hello?
Okay. Just making sure you're there.
I can't hear you.
Oh.
Am I volume over y'all?
Okay, can you hear us now?
I can't now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go around the table.
Good evening, David McBride, Town Councillor.
Grosso Mary, Town Council.
Adam Pacino, Town Council.
Still about the Town Council?
Dan Jaski, Town Council.
And I am Mayor Franco. Oh.
John Bird, Town Manager.
Shall we continue going around?
Susan Austin, Superintendent of Groton Public Schools.
Beverly Washington, Board of Ed.
Ray Angle, Interim Director of Finance.
Matthew Shulman, Board of Ed.
Ian Thomas, Board of Ed.
Adrian Johnson, Board of Ed.
Thank you. We will have the reading of the public hearing notice. Mr. Bird.
Sure.
Wait a minute, did you, did you want me to introduce myself or no?
Well, that's, well. Well, I had already introduced you by calling out your name and then you, and to ask you to say hello.
I didn't hear that part.
Okay, would you like to introduce yourself?
No, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Bird.
Sure. Town of Groton, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Groton Town Council will hold a public hearing on the F Y E two thousand twenty-six annual town budget pursuant to Chapter nine, Section nine point three point one of the Town Charter on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth at six P M at the Thrive fifty-five plus Active Living Center and also via Zoom. The full copy of the budget estimates will be on file with the Town Clerk for public inspection as well as on the, online at the town's website.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're up to budget presentations. Up first is going to be Superintendent of Schools, Susan Austin.
Thank you very much, Superintendent and Chair of the Board of Education, Beverly Washington. We're going to do this together.
Okay.
So I just want to say good evening and tonight is a conference night at all, all of our schools, so a lot of parents and teachers are very busy tonight talking about kind of the home run stretch as we go towards the summer and finish up the school year. So it's an exciting night for everyone. This is the Board of Education's budget now and besides the board members that we have present, I think we saw that Jay Whiteloff was online. We also have Dr. Andrea Ackerman, Dean Antipast, Mike Whitney, and Jen White. So they're all board members who've worked really hard with the staff to really look at this budget deeply. One of the things that we had to pass out, and I think there are a couple extra copies, are the F Y twenty-six budget overview. All of this information is online, including the whole budget, and it's really highlighted. So anybody, you know, in the audience or who is listening can really look at the budget carefully before we come back and kind of go through it more and more deeply. Our Board of Ed had adopted a mission statement, teaching and learning. It's simple but elegant. Our Board of Ed goals are to provide a dynamic, rigorous curriculum, ensure effective and engaging instruction, and embrace excellent learning environments. And Beverly's going to take it from here, talking about some of the budget priorities that were set.
Thank you, Superintendent Austin. The budget process started way back in September when the superintendent got together with the principals and the central office administration. They developed the budget. In January, she gave it to the Board of Ed and the Board of Ed started reviewing the budget. And some of the things that the Board of Ed, when we reviewed the budget, some of the things that we, some of our priorities were, the first one, as always, should be increased student achievement. That's one of our top priorities. And we want to enhance literacy instruction K through twelve and focus on the science of reading for K through five. Last year, we put three hundred thousand dollars in our budget to purchase Witten Wisdom. It's a new reading program. And so far, we have saw, we have seen some success with that program. And we're hoping as the years go on, our kids will do great with that reading program. The second thing is we want to increase rigor and relevance in math instruction. We looked at our test scores last year and our test scores in math, I won't say it, but they need improvement. And so this year, the Board really wants to concentrate on math curriculum. We want to boost up those test scores. Because even though some people think test scores don't matter, in this state, they do matter. That's what people look at when they're looking at your school district, they're looking at the test scores. The third thing is to add high dose tutoring to our budget because, again, last year from September to January, we had some tutors and we, and they helped some students and we saw a great success with the students that had those tutors. They really benefited from high dose tutoring. So that's also in our budget this year. And we want to amplify the Groton Public School's science curriculum, K through twelve, with next generation science standards. So that goes with increased student achievement. The next is college and career readiness. Because the Board realizes that not everyone is going to go to college. Some kids are going to, you know, go have careers. They might be a plumber, electrician, X-ray technician. So we want to develop those career pathways for those students. So we want to align science, techni- technology, engineering, art, and math, enrichment opportunities K through twelve to career pathways nine through twelve with community partners. Now, we have several community partners. We have Electric Boat, Pfizer, Project O.
NAS, the Seaport, everybody around us is a partner. We really take advantage of this wonderful neck of the woods, this wonderful southeastern Connecticut and partner with them all.
We also want to continue to increase our Advanced Placement Program, our International Backgloria Program, and our Yukon Credit Program. Because if kids get credit in like Advanced Placement and Yukon, that's going to save families money in the long run. And if we can help families save money, that'd be a good thing for us and for the community. We also want to expand our National Naval Defense Connecticut Corps with, with the goal of becoming a Naval Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, which would then be fully funded by the Department of Defense, hopefully. I'll put that in parentheses, but we want to expand that program. Next is instructional equipment. We always want to continue to upgrade technology in the classroom and with that goes the infrastructure and computer devices for the student. This used to be paid by our Department of Defense Supplement Funds, but this year, this is all going to be in our budget. Special education and social emotional learning. We want to provide high quality special education services to students in preschool through grade twelve. Our special ed enrollment is increasing and so we, in our budget, I'll talk about that later, we did add a special ed teacher. And we also want to address social emotional learning and needs for all pre-K through twelve students with mental health supports. Because since COVID, after COVID now, we found a lot of kids need social emotional learning. They need to learn how to interact with each other, how to communicate, and so we want to work on that. And the last thing is school safety and security. We want to expand our school resource officers and security personnel at Fitch High School and at Groton Middle School. And there's also a chance for us to apply for a grant to get additional school resource offices because security and safety in our schools are really important to the Board of Education. And I think that's about it.
So there, there are always drivers of the budget and just like home, inflation is the big driver of our budget too. There are contracts that we negotiate and we've really built those up to be four-year contracts, which is really great for the Board and for, I think, our employees that this, you know, we're able to sustain this a little better. So those all have legal fees, so legal fees and special ed negotiations and also other board matters that need, you know, insight from our lawyer. Health insurance, we're continuing to monitor. We've had a little better history this year than last year, so fortunately, things have kind of stabilized, but we definitely want to be able to invest in that health insurance and OPEB that we need to do and take responsibility for that. Property costs, increase in property costs, you know, everything from, you know, maintenance and, you know, keeping up with HVAC systems and testing of HVAC systems, all those are really critical to keeping that healthy environment for our students. Transportation costs, we did sign a five-year bus contract and we're in about year three and so there are higher costs than we had had before. We used to have a six-to-six program where buses would run and you wouldn't pay extra in the middle of the day for field trips, but no longer is that true. And we do have to pay for additional transportation. So and athletic buses are another thing. And also increased costs for the district for special education and for some students that might be placed out of our school district. Beverly already mentioned that we use, we use D O D supplement, Impact Aid funds, to support our initiatives in technology. Since I arrived with Dr. Grenier in, you know, twenty fourteen, that has been the case, but we had slightly less numbers last year, so I don't think we made it for this year, although I think my team, my Impact Aid team has worked extras, you know, extra carefully and we have more kids now signed on and more parents that signed in the Impact Aid fund, so my fingers are crossed for the following year. Utilities, just like home, electric costs are increasing, all fuel. I know that we've done some work in getting contracts for the future and kind of getting a good quote for the prices of that for the future. And then there's contractual and wage inflation and a lot of it based on the Connecticut State minimum wage. So every year, we expect to have that increase along with the contractuals. Another thing that we look at all the time is enrollment and that those numbers are really tiny, but hopefully you've got your own packet so you can see. And if you look at over time, we have about eight hundred students come into Groton Schools annually and about six hundred fifty to seven hundred leave. And being a military community, it's, it's interesting, the dynamics in a classroom. We try to keep the numbers twenty to twenty-four through high school, but there are times that a class might go down to seventeen or might go up to twenty-five depending on the enrollment, coming and going. And that's not only military, we have a lot of transient students who are looking for affordable housing and they might be in New London, Norwich, Groton, Ledger. We share kids quite often. But if you look at the numbers, they're a little up from this year for the projection for F Y twenty-six. But they've been kind of steady and flat. When you go back to even twenty twenty, we saw a higher number, four thousand seven hundred fifteen, and the drop off after COVID really seems to have affected a lot of our communities. Yeah, that's it. One back. Is that budget history? There we go, one more. Yeah, there we go. Budget history, if you look at from twenty eighteen nineteen and even if you went back to twenty fourteen, when I first got here, we were really having lower budgets that were, you know, in between zero and two percent quite often. And then, you know, post COVID, we did have, we let go of all of our ARPESR funding and all of those positions, so we did lose about a hundred and twenty-four positions at the end of last year. So, but it still was a seven point nine one percent increase and the average is two point one four percent over time. And then this pie chart just reflects every school budget, that if you look at the blue area and the red, those are the salaries and benefits. And what we give to school these days are students, teachers, administrators, parent educators, custodians, you know, the nutrition program and people who serve the nutrition program. So it's really all about our students and their academic growth and their, the people that serve the children. So that's three quarters really of our budget. Beyond that are these purchase services, property services, transportation, tuitions, supplies, equipment dues and fees. And then we added a contingency. And Beverly's going to talk a little bit more about some of the details in the budget and don't let the percent scare you because sometimes it's really the dollar amount increase and it depends on what we were looking at and comparing it to.
I get to talk about the fun stuff, all the increases. The first one is salaries and wages. In the F Y twenty-five budget, it was fifty-nine, fifty-three million, nine hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. And the current, in this year, in next year's budget, it was going to be fifty-seven million, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And that's an increase of approximately three million dollars, which is a five point six percent increase. Now, salary and wages, this line includes administrators, teachers, nurses, parrots, tutors, substitute teachers, clerico, personnel, custodians, maintenance, and technicians. It is not a five point six percent wage increase. The wage increase is just three percent. If you think about the wages for the teachers and everybody, that's, it's really just a three percent wa- wage increase. But this year, the nurses and the nurses aides are in the Board's budget. And that's ten new employees that we have in the Board's budget this year that we didn't have in la- in last year's budget. We added a second nurse at Groton Middle School because Groton Middle School, they have nine hundred students and they needed, with nine hundred students, they needed a second nurse. Because all the elementary schools have one nurse and their, their enrollment is approximately, approximately like four hundred students. So you could see the middle school has doubled the amount of students, so they need two nurses. And we added a special ed teacher because our special ed population has increased. We added five parrots or two tutors, either one, because we want to, like I said before about the high dose tutoring, we want our students, especially in the elementary school, we want to start, the Board wants to start focusing on the elementary school. We need to build a good foundation. So if we start with the elementary school, that's going to help us as the students progress through the Groton Public School system. And we also need to improve our test scores, like I said before, and that's why we have that five point six percent increase in salaries and wages. Employee benefits, you could see the numbers, I don't really need to read the numbers, but it's a ten point two percent increase and that is due to increase in group insurance, workers' compensation, Medicare, unemployment, Social Security, and benefits for retirees. And that's why that's a ten point two percent increase. And then we have purchase services and that is a four point one percent increase and that is due to some things for special ed we cannot do in-house, so we have to, you know, do those services outside of the Groton Public School system. And that's one of the reasons we have that increase there. And also, I'm going to read my little cheat sheet. Preschool, power school software, we have a school resource officer salary, technology services, and that's about it for that. And the next one is property services that went up four point one percent. And that increase is due to ground repair, heat and plumbing, building fire protection. Also, the school district needs a new plow truck. We only have one plow truck. We need to purchase a new one. And in the future, we're looking to develop a vehicle program, replacement program, so we don't have to put seventy-five thousand dollars in the budget at one time for a plow truck. If we start thinking ahead about what we need to replace, then we'll be in better shape. Let me see what else. The next one is transportation, insurance. Transportation, insurance, communication, and tuition, that's a point eight percent increase. That's not such a big increase. And that's due to special education vocational, special education Board of Education placements, special education magnet school choice. And that's why we have that increase. The next one is supplies. That went up twenty-one point two percent, so that's a, that's a good increase, twenty-one point two percent. And that's really due to general classroom, computer, general classroom supplies, computer supplies, and custodial supplies, supplies. And it's also pupil tests go into that line, software, propane, natural gas, and electricity. And the cost of electricity has increased and one of the reasons the cost of electricity has increased because Eversource has charged us a procurement fee. And that, I don't know if anybody here has Eversource, but if you have Eversource, you're paying that fee too. And we were hoping that school districts wouldn't have to pay that because we are nonprofit, but we have to pay that fee. And that's one of the reasons why electricity went up, but electricity's going up in general. And the next one is equipment and the equipment is, has to do with computer softwares, computers. Last year, we used, we paid for our computers out of the D O D supplemental fund monies that we got. And this year, we're not getting that money, so that cost is in our budget. And that went up, that's why you say that four hundred and eighty-nine, that's pretty scary, but that's one of the reasons it went up because now all that is in our budget and we're not getting the money from the D O D anymore.
Well.
Go ahead, correct me.
No, don't just depending on those number of kids, we have many more students that we've signed in this year, so hopefully we will get back to that.
And that, and that's for Chromebooks, that type of laptops, that kind of stuff that kids need. You know, we always have to try to upgrade them. They break, we got to replace them, so. The next is dues and fees and that's sixteen point eight percent. That's for CAE. CAE stands for the Connecticut Associations of Board of Education. That's, that's like professional development for Board of Education members and CAPS. CAPS has to do with superintendents and that's a professional development organization also.
We also added a couple organizations that are related to military superintendents and military school districts and they have been wonderful in supporting us with Impact Aid information. As we know, things are changing in Washington with the Department of Ed and Department of Defense, so we're, you know, and their information has been just timely and it's been really very good news that these things are continuing. We're going to be applying for a D O D E A grant. It's, I think, number nine and they come in at about a million or one point two five oh million if we're doing K five, which we are in math. And so we're continuing to go for these grants and we've already received one check that's come to our town so far in Impact Aid. So they, they are saying full steam ahead, but this organization does keep me apprised and then I can keep John Bird apprised and, you know, be prepared if we need to be.
The next line is contingency. We didn't have this in our budget last year, that's why you don't see any percent increase, but we need it because this year, we're going to, we're going to start to negotiate with our custodians, our maintenance people, our secretaries and our I T staff. So we don't know what, what, that's going to incur financially, so we have a contingency fund for that. And that's about it and we're trying to, hopefully, we do our best with the students and this budget will help us meet the needs of all our students and the staff in the Groton Public School system. Anybody want to add anything, board members? Nope.
Did we cover it?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Up next is our, I don't know, up next is our Town Manager, Mr. Bird.
Do we have this printed out?
I don't have it printed out, but I'll, I'll send it out. It'll be posted online too. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate all the hard work of the Board of Ed and all the good communication and great handouts. I just want to recognize the Town Council for all the work they do. They put in a ton of hours with no pay and they're about to put in a whole lot of hours in the next month. So thank you in advance, say for the, Board of Ed's been doing that for a while now. Just to get you updated on where we're at in the budget process, the, by April sixth of each year, well, I'll go back a little bit. We actually start the budget all the way back in October internally and see I, the capital projects, other things, the departments must get their final request to me by January fourteenth. The subdivision, City and Groton Long Point, and the Board of Ed must get their information to me by February twenty-eighth. I have to have my budget all put together by March fifteenth. When I say my budget, I actually have control of about thirty percent of the budget. That's actually the town operations, the rest of it is up to the Council and then R T M. April sixth, by that date, we must have a public hearing. That's what we're doing tonight. The Town Council must, they will actually kick off their regular meetings on the budget tomorrow night. They must have a account, a budget approved by April twenty-eighth. The R T M must start their deliberations by May third and wrap up by May twenty-fifth, which then sends the budget back to the Council to set the final mill rate, the tax rate, which has to be done by June ninth. to be done by June 9th. Again, this is a very preliminary budget. I'm sure it's going to change a lot. But the current proposed budget for all, not just town operations, everything is 163 million, a little over that, which is up by just over 6 million, which is a 3.8% overall increase in the budget. The current year's 25, FYE 25 mill rate, the tax rate's 23.08. We're looking at potentially using 5 million in fund balance to offset taxes if nothing changed, if nothing got caught, if everything went exactly as laid out, it'd be a one, about a 1.9 mill increase. And then a little bit on one where we're at, where we're at currently on mill rates, on the tax rates regionally. We have the second lowest tax rate in the region right now at 23.08. Stonington has the lowest. The average is 24.83. And just a little bit on how taxes are calculated. A mill rate or the tax rate is equal to $1 for every $1,000 of your assessed value on your home. So if you take that assessed value, divide it by 1,000, and then multiply it by that tax rate, like this year, the 23.08, that gives you your, your property tax payment. And just a few examples, if, again, if nothing changed and it went to the 24.98 mill rate, I'll just, this will all be online, but I'll jump down to the average assessed. The average assessed home in Groton is 292,600. There'd be a tax increase with this increase of $556 for the year, again, if nothing changed. Getting into our overall budget, I'll just point out a few of the, the bigger drivers in this. One is public safety, which is up about 847,000. That's 8%. It's, it's our largest department. We just finished up a contract to right-size where they're at on their wages. So that's, that's driving a lot of this. They had lagged behind a bit in the region. And then public works, our other largest department, is up 4.1%. And that's where utilities and a lot of, you buy sand, a lot of that stuff goes there. So that drives a lot of the public works. The, a few other things, a couple of things that are down this year. Capital projects are down by about 1.5 million. Debt service, the bond debts, which is mostly for the schools, is down by about half a million. Education, we've already gone over that. And for outside agencies, the biggest increase is for the city, about 280,000 or 4.6% increase. This is just graphically, where does our money go? You can see the green there is the education at 58%. The dark blue is town operations at 28%. And the other biggest one is the red for capital projects and debt. Here's graphical representation of how they increased, going to 26 for the beginning. And you can see it, and it lies much the same there. And this just goes over some of our bond debt. We're, we're paying about 10 million in bond debt for 26. Total school debt is 8.4 of that, about 6.6 of that's the actual Groton 2020. Capital projects, just to point out a few. I know it's hard to read again, this will be online. One of the biggest, we usually spend somewhere in the ballpark of 3.5 million on our main project, somewhere around there. Right off the bat, we have to spend this next year about 1.3 million on roads itself. So that takes up a good third or so of the capital project funding. We're doing a culvert on River Road that takes up over about 320,000. We have to repair sidewalks. A lot of the money goes towards routine things. One thing I did want to point out, we've been getting a lot of calls lately on, I think it's called the Snake Hill Park over in Noank that, where it walks down towards the water. That's getting in really bad shape. Some people have asked about that, is in the budget coming up? Let's see, a couple other things. Education, a few of the things, just so everybody knows what I've got in here for tentative recommendations for funding. The water here, Sam made that case, that we definitely need that. The finance software, about 330,000, I do find that is very much in need. The, the high school PA system is in here as well as school video cameras. And then, that's the bulk of it. Moving on. Just where does the revenue come from? Great, 71%, 71% of it comes from property taxes. That's obviously the largest driver. 26 million state grants in aid education, which is fantastic. 6 million, 6.5 million state aid to the town itself and a variety of other smaller ones. And then just, this is kind of, you'll find this in one of the first couple of pages of the full budget. It's kind of a snapshot, what I find is the most, things people often look up. You'll see what the current FYE 25 budget is, 157 million and change. You'll see the 26 proposed budget, the amount of change, the percent change, what the current mill rate is, what the proposed mill rate, the change, including percent. And then some of the biggest drivers there, as well as use of fund ballots, what a value of one mill is. When I talked about a mill, just to throw it out there. One mill equals 4.7 million that the town takes in. So when you hear a mill, every mill is four point, about 4.7 million. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to note that Council Board Line did arrive at 6:15 PM. And we will open the public hearing. We don't have a timer with us this evening. Oh, you do. If you could just raise your hand to the. When the time has expired, would you raise your hand to the speaker? I don't have my paperwork in front of me because I'm not sitting in my normal seat. But this is the part where we open it up to citizens' comments. You can have, I believe it's five minutes for speaking. And please state your name and address when you come up to the podium so we can open up public speaking. Is, and I believe there's a sheet. Was there a sheet sign up? Is there? All right, we have more people than this here, so I'm hoping more will speak. Up first is Tom Olson.
Tom Olson, 188 Crossroads Drive. I'm here representing the Town of Groton Conservation Commission. Under CIP, B-8, the Open Space Acquisition Fund. It's been zeroed out this year as we, and this is based on recommendation from the Conservation Commission, based on the amount of funds that are already in that account. And so we concur with that. And on a personal note, I strongly recommend that you just take the mayor's budget and go for it with it. I reviewed it in detail across the board and find that it's been very well put together, the raises that are needed to be done here in the town. And I support the increase and with the coordination that's happened between the Board of Ed and the Town Council, hopefully, this will move forward in a rapid manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, Hazel Levine.
Hazel Levine, 24 Godfrey Street, Mystic. I spoke at several of these meetings in the past, so I know that most of you are familiar with me. I'm a resident and I also represent the Groton Soccer Club. I'm a big town proponent of the town. And I always speak to, in favor of the fields and the athletic fields being built. And I do, have to be honest, I have a hard time tracking all this stuff. I don't know how you all do it. And, but I did hear talk that maybe only some and parts of the field package that was presented might be pushed forward. And I wanted to just make sure that you understood that I think it's really important that all the fields get pushed forward. And I know that's a big ask. In fact, it came to my attention the last meeting I was at when someone said, well, how can you, how can we fund all these things? Obviously, need funding. I mean, I see libraries here, I see, you know, education, all of that. But I, I just can't go to sleep at night thinking that fields are also important because of the opportunities it provides for young, for youth, and, and ways that enhances education and enhances, you know, reading in libraries. I think that being outdoors and participating in these sports. And all of us that do come and speak in support of the fields, they actually, people like myself, I'm a volunteer coach, fields manager, I'm on the board. And I devote a lot of my time just so that there's access for everyone in our town. And we put a lot of effort into that. And I hope that with, I hope it's realized that without the fields, there's no point in doing this, this work. It's accessibility issue at this point, you know, that we have, we're getting to the point where the demand is too big for what we have available in our town. And, and just, I guess, to one, to prove one point is tomorrow, I drive my daughter to North Branford. So what's that, two and a half hours round trip? So she can try out for a select higher level team to play on that we don't have the ability for her to play on here. And while I'm there, I'm going with a few other people. We're going to spend money in the local restaurants. And that could be done here if we had the fields. But right now, our fields are grass that are available, that are accessible to the youth in the town. And they're too wet, we can't play on them. So I do think it's important to put those turf fields in for, to enhance the accessibility. Because it's really not fair that my child and we have the ability and my family to bring her there, but not everybody does. People have more than one child. I know some people really stress themselves to get these opportunities for their kids. And I just, it bugs me that it's an accessibility issue at some point, too. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Up next, John Kafka.
John Kafka, 20th Felt Drive. I'm here as well about the fields and everything like that. I have two small kids, one fifth grade, one third grade. Both go to Charles, Charles Barnum. They love the school. I do, too. One big thing, I know Hazel said, support the whole fields. But the main thing, dealing with the schools, that Fitch High School Fields needs to get fixed. That will help alleviate a lot of what we have down with the youth sports if that field gets fixed. Lot of it has to do with kids getting out, doing stuff outside of school, doing stuff to help with their, their mental health. That kind of stuff is, is key for what the kids went through in the last few years. So I think building up those fields, building up that, the, making the fields more accessible, making the fields better availability for different students, all, anybody can access it. It, it makes it better for the community as a whole. That's all I really want to say.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come up and speak?
We have the president of our board for Mystic and Noank Library would like to speak, but she's on Zoom.
Okay.
So, yeah, thanks.
Okay, we're going to set that up. She's joined?
Oh, there we go. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Please, you could state your name and address and.
Excellent. Thank you. So Mary Tullis Engvall, 72 Main Street. Thank you so much. I am truly honored to have the opportunity to speak briefly tonight about our treasured Mystic and Noank Library. Want to thank all of you, our town government leaders, for all of the service that you do on behalf of the Town of Groton. You know, we live in a very special community with a very rich history and, you know, wonderful citizens who act as stewards of our past and guides for our future. I personally am a volunteer serving on the Mystic and Noank Library's Board of Trustees. I'm currently co-president. And speaking tonight to really express my support for this wonderful and important institution that's been an anchor in our community for, you know, over 130 years now. So as you likely know, the library was a gift to the community from Sea Captain Elihu Spicer back in 1893. And for generations, our community has been served by the library. And it's really, again, still what anchors us all here today. The library was established then to offer equitable access to information and inspiration. And, you know, maybe surprisingly, maybe not surprisingly, that's still what it does today. One thing you may not know, although hopefully those around this table do, but many don't, is that we are a nonprofit library. And through our kind of prudent fiscal management and very enthusiastic fundraising, which hopefully you've seen and will continue to see, it's really critical to maintaining the magnificent historic structure. That is that beautiful Romanesque building on Library Street. And it really creates a sense of place, one of the things I think that makes Groton so very special. So equally important, though, is the funding that we gratefully receive every year from the Town of Groton. Truly, I want you to know that this is essential to allowing us to keep our doors open, allowing us to continue to provide our well-loved programs and services to our community. And I would just like to say that we have a few other volunteers that are in the room with you tonight in support. Together, we're asking for the support of the town manager's recommendation for fiscal year 2026. And want you to know that that will allow the Mystic and Noank Library to, you know, truly continue to inspire the mind and engage the spirit of all we serve. So I thank you again for these few moments to ask for your support.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Chudukwitz. I live at 161 Shunpek Road in Cromwell, Connecticut. But I work for SCAD, which is in New London. And we're grateful for the funding that this body awards to us every year to supplement and subsidize the roughly 380 to 400 individuals from Groton that receive treatment from SCAD every year. And we do have a significant portion of our clients that we serve who are underinsured or uninsured. And we are glad to keep doing so. I do want to share with you all what we've been able to add to our continuum of care this year. So we've added more treatment beds, a hepatitis C treatment protocol, primary care services, a trauma treatment track that's exclusive from substance use disorder. So we found that folks were leaving treatment and doing great. And the substance use disorder wasn't an issue anymore, but they still had this underlying untreated trauma. So we're offering that as well as we layered back in a family service coordinator counselor to work with the families and get that family program initiated again, as well as a recreation coordinator for our clients. So we've been able to do a lot with a little, as always, but we're thankful for your generosity. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
I wouldn't have a great speech or anything to say, but I'm glad that we, oh, Joanne, Wayland Doian, and Jetson Avenue, there. All right. And I just want to say that I appreciate the support for the Groton Public Library that you've always shown. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. All right, we will close the public hearing portion of our meeting and entertain.
Motion, John.
All right, motion by Gajewski. Seconded by Rusk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Counselor Parker, I didn't hear your vote.
Aye.
All right, thank you. That passes eight to zero to zero. It is 6:52, or 6:53 PM. Thank you all. Thank you for coming out.